We will move on to item 6.6, 10 a.m. Consideration of Proposed Two-Year Plan to Complete the Wildfire Benefit Assessment Zone Pilot Project. And we have our community development team coming up. Deputy Director Walker and Director Turner, as well as Code Enforcement Officer Marcus, or Supervisor, Manager, Marcus Beltramo. Yeah, next time I'll simplify it. Please.
Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. The Wildfire Benefit Assessment Program started in 2019 from a Prop 218 ballot process to establish an assessment zone for wildfire or hazardous vegetation management. The boundaries aligned exactly with the previous benefit assessment zone, which had been done for roads years before that. In its operation since 2019, it has, this pilot program has presented a number of challenges. Back in 2019, we had limited staff resources, high staff turnover, and as that has smoothed out under Marcus's leadership, we have, over the years, addressed a number of properties. We have not, in the past, did not do liens against those properties because of lack of staff resources and lack of staff training. However, in the last couple of years, things have smoothed out considerably. We've had stable staff. We dedicated one staff member to addressing this program, just this program, he does other things, but one single staff member then to oversee this hazardous vegetation management, which is just limited to the subdivisions in the Riviera's. So the Kelsoville Riviera, Riviera Heights, Riviera West, and Buckingham. We've also had regular meetings with representatives of each HOA. And so the progress has gone very well. It's also given us time to talk and confer with county council regarding the recapturing of those funds. In that time, it was made clear to us that we cannot recapture those funds because the benefit assessment was done for the purpose of hazardous vegetation management. And to place a lien on the property would, in effect, be double dipping, or making property owners pay for the hazardous vegetation that they had paid for with their assessment, with the Prop 218 process. We've learned a number of things in this pilot program since 2019 that will inform us as we move forward with a county-wide hazardous vegetation management program, which we intend to do because in the last couple of years, we've noticed a sharp increase in complaints regarding hazardous vegetation throughout the roughly 60,000 parcels that the county manages. And so we have benefited from a number of lessons. Because this is not a revolving fund meant to go on forever, and because the activity that we have performed has been subtracted from the fund balances as established in 2019, we were thinking about how can we continue to use those funds to benefit the hazardous vegetation management in the Riviera subdivisions to the best of our ability. And so what you have before you today is a plan that the department worked out for a two-year continuation and closure, final closure of this pilot program, which will address the large draw of, or the large dedication of staff resources necessary to operate it, as well as continue to provide those services that the property owners voted for for the remaining two years. Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith is here to walk you through the next two year, the two-year plan. And Cannabis Program Manager Marcus Beltramo is here to answer any questions you may have. So I will turn it over to Shannon. Oh, also, the slides for the presentation were included as an attachment, and Johanna is just about to get them up on the screen. Thank you.
6.10? 10 a.m. one.
6.6.
Additionally, we do have representatives from three of our four HOAs that are prepared to answer any questions. Also, they would like to give a short presentation, if they may. They were requesting 10 minutes, if that's amenable to the board.
And that was requested, and I did check with Supervisor Pyska. We'll go ahead and provide longer than three minutes, since they're representative and not just an individual public member.
Great. Thank you.
Just to make clear, this is a presentation that we gave to our partners with the HOAs in September, to kind of give them an update on where we were with this project. Before we start into where we are with our current fiscal update, I was asked to put together a few numbers, kind of outlining just the project as a whole. So just to bring everyone up to speed, this assessment originally collected approximately $485,000. We have spent approximately $185,000 of that. So the remaining, that's where we, so it's 306 is the, is the real number. And, and in spending that 185,000 over, since 2019, in 2019, '20, '21, and '21, '22, 85 abatements were completed. In '22, '23, we didn't complete any abatements that, we're retooling the program at that point. And then in '23, '24, '22, abatements have been, were completed. And then I'm going to present on this current has-veg season that is wrapping up now. So that's almost 100 abatements completed over the course of the project for that 185. So this slide that's up now outlines the balances of each HOA, or each service area, I should say, and, and showing you how that totals to the 306 that remains. Next slide. And then in '24, '25, so the current has-veg season that we're wrapping up right now, this was as of September 25, these stats, we had received 274 complaints, performed over 125 inspections, we closed 100 cases due to no violation or people who voluntarily self-abated. One abatement had begun on this project in September in the Riviera West, and four warrants had been prepped, Marcus. I think that those, two of the four warrants, those abatements have been completed to date. That's my understanding as well. So two of the four that were being prepped in September, two of those have been completed, and the other two are scheduled. And five citations with fines issued, we're hoping to collect through data ticket, have been issued, with more being prepped to go out. So that's what's been completed in '24, '25 on this project. I'm going to pass it back to Director Turner.
As I stated in the introduction, the benefit assessment zones were established through the one-time assessment program, compliant with Prop 218. There was no mechanism adopted into that program that would allow for the recovery of the funds that were expended for abatement. Additionally, as that third bullet point explains, because code enforcement was the default enforcement arm of this program, we do, we are bound by Chapter 13 due process timelines, as well as notification efforts. So as we work with the homeowners association, which they're all avidly working with their property owners already, so by the time it gets to us, it's the ones that they haven't been able to move forward on. So then that starts our timeline, which is an initial contact to the owner, allowing for time for self-abatement, second notice, then where you need a warrant. So it's very time-intensive on our staff resource side.
So again, this just kind of outlines the differences in the two processes that kind of got conflated between the CSA, its authority and process based on state code, and then how code enforcement operates. And that is the, kind of the root of why this program has been difficult for CDD to operate successfully, and has prompted our kind of relooking at this program again, and the proposal that we're going to put before you today. Because of the time-intensive nature of this, really, the challenge has been the dedication of staff time. We have, as Director Turner mentioned, we have a dedicated program supervisor who is spending approximately 25% of his time on this project now. He also supervises our AVA program and our new illegal dumping grant, all very important, high priorities, right? So it becomes difficult to manage, and it seems that we would be much more successful operating this program with dedicated staff paid for from these funds. So next slide. We have put together a proposal to utilize the 306 to both fund the salary of a dedicated officer to this project, and the expenses, a little tiny bit of overhead expenses, and then the abatements are listed as professional services. And it shows in year one, and for this, should this, should we move forward with this proposal, we would start this, kind of restart this project in January. And so it would go from January 1 and wrap at the end of '26, supporting a full-time officer over those two years. So this breaks down the 306 for the first year, and then if you'll, next slide shows how we would resolve the, the fund in two years with both the officer's time and the professional services of abatement contractors, split roughly the way that the, the money came in, and the percentages are listed in the attached budget, which is more detailed than this presentation. Next slide. So we've put quite a bit of thought into what that officer would do, because the has-veg season is, you know, not the full year. So really being thoughtful about what that officer would do in what would be considered the off-season, and so we've kind of outlined that for you here. And next slide. So we are hoping to get some direction or approval to move forward with this proposal. And should that be the case, then we would open, you know, we would have to formally amend our budget, open a code officer position, and fill it by 1, 125, and then dedicate that officer full-time to the remainder of this project for the next two years.
Anything further?
I think, that's it.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it up for questions or comments regarding this presentation. Should we go to the HOAs?
Yep.
All right. I know that we had some representatives of the local HOAs in the Riviera's. Please come on up, and again, we'll give you more than three minutes. Hopefully, they'll be back.
Thank you for some additional time. My colleague and I.
If you can speak in the microphone, please.
Right. Good morning. My name's Phil Hartley. I'm President of Riviera West Board of Directors, also serve on the Conocti Fire Safe Council, and on a really interesting assignment, working as a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, which is a great group, really something else. We carry with us in our presentation, Kathy and I, the concerns and comments of our two fellow HOA presidents. So we appreciate some additional time, so that everyone can be, all four communities can be heard. This pilot project to remove hazardous vegetation from neglected properties has followed a very long, five-year, bumpy, and crooked road marked by conflicting legal issues and conflicting communication issues, as well as many prior expectations of the program that were created during the process of voting. Those expectations were created by a former supervisor at public presentations, as reported in the newspaper, and a lot of documentation before that. But as my legal beagle friend told me, yes, but Phil, you've got to remember that promises made during an election process are not legally defendable after the, after the election. So we understand that those expectations were not carried out because that they were not codified in the actual legislation that the board passed in order to enact. Nobody's, nobody's fault there. It's just as unfortunate that a lot of expectations of the voters and the HOAs were, were not met. However, consequently, the, the assigned county department was faced with creating a map of procedures and a vehicle for implementation from scratch. Community development literally built the vehicle as it went, sort of like building an airplane in flight. It's very difficult. Although the four, the four communities have great empathy for county staff, assigned with this very difficult task, the multi-year delay and lack of complete accountability has been frustrating to all the communities involved. We had sincerely hoped that this would be another example of a successful community Board of Supervisors project, cooperative project. But today is the first day of the rest of the journey, and it is renewed resolve that the four HOAs are more than willing to assist with the completion of the pilot, offering any helpful assistance, direct support, advice, and knowledgeable expertise. To ensure the success of the next step and to provide clear accountability, we would ask that the Board of Supervisors postpone consideration of this specific proposal to provide the time and opportunity for the four communities to have meaningful input into the drafting of a map for completion. This time will allow for, first of all, fiscal liability, or fiscal information, to catch up with the program, in a sense. Currently, there is a lack of complete information concerning which parcels have been cleared, how much has been expended to clear these parcels, and what funds have been recovered from cited property owners, if any. I would offer the Riviera West Fund Report that I've distributed to you as an example of where we are at this, this very moment, where you can see that we started out with $48,000 in our fund, we have a balance of $30,000 left, and for a calculated expenditure of $18,000. But we can only account for about $6,000 of that $18,000. There's four properties listed there and the cost of clearing each. There's some small, as you say, some small charges for indirect costs, and then some undefined expenditures that are only identified by code numbers that are yet to be defined. Even then, that leaves about $5,800 that's simply not accounted for. Where did that money go? It's taken from our fund, and we don't know why or where it went. Now Deputy Administrator Walker-Smith has been working very tirelessly to trace revenues and expenditures and providing information to us as it's, as it is developed. I have every confidence that the accounting will ultimately be clear and valid. However, that is going to take some time. Complete and valid fiscal information is essential, both for public accountability and for making wise decisions about what steps to take next. We simply need to know how the funds are, are being distributed and used. The prospect, secondly, this prospect to spend 47% of all the remaining funds on a full-time employee to carry out the program is just not warranted. All four HOAs regularly, every year, annually, conduct professional inspections, including the use of certified arborists when necessary, posting properties, issuing legal citations and reminders, assessing fines according to the process regulations, according to due process regulations, taking small claims court actions, and placing liens on continually non-responsive properties. That experience and knowledge allows us to make qualified assessments of the time and reasonable cost of managing this project. This year alone, this summer, Riviera West, which is the smallest of the four, issued 119 citations. All that has to go through a process of notification, posting, due process to allow owners to appeal, and then a fine process, which has its own process, and then we, and then we start our process of going to small claims court to, you know, get the money, or to, and we place liens on property. We do all that as an internal process, year after year after year. We're pretty good at it. Okay. From the start, from the start of this project, now, from the start of this project, we have always supported using the revenue funds to pay for reasonable administrative costs. But this discussion has never, never occurred until this month, essentially, or until October. And as we've always believed, that the funds should pay for the administrative overhead for this project. But it is simply too difficult to understand how 40 hours per week for 18 months, or 2,880 hours to complete the routine tasks that constitute this project is, is, is valid. Assuming there are about 50 properties that are currently awaiting abatement on our first sort of cycle of doing this, which has been a five-year-long cycle now, that means we would be using about 58 hours per property abatement, you know, according to this. Also, further, it's going to be difficult and a source of ongoing scrutiny to ensure that each hour of this assignment is spent just on this project. It would be better that a mutual agreement be established on what percentage of the revenue should be granted for administrative purposes, as is common practice in grant funding and entitlement allocations from the state and from the federal government. This is usually referred to as an indirect cost rate, which the institution, or the county, or any organization sets aside to cover administrative costs, and then what they use that money for and how they use it would be up to, up to the agent. That's how I think we should approach the administrative costs of this proposal. Now, we understand that the issue of recovery of funds is challenging, because, again, the resolution that the board adopted made no provision for the recovery of the funds that were spent on clearing properties. By the way, it also made no provision for administrative costs either. Also not, but, and I must, I must say, as a parting comment, I do not understand the concept of double dipping. I bounced it off my legal friend. He had problems with it. What it basically says is that if I'm a property owner and I have a bunch of hazardous vegetation on my property, all I have to do is refuse to clear it, and then the county will clear it for free.
Yeah.
No. And that just doesn't make any, make any sense, you know, whatsoever. There are lots of county services that are double dipped. County supports the, the Lake County Transfer Station in Lakeport. We pay for that out of our property taxes to pay for that service, but when I pull up my pickup truck full of stuff, they charge me another fee. Is that double dipping? There's just lots of services where there are additional fees that come after the service has been paid for. All in all, we can work together to make this critical project a success, and end trying to demonstrate another community and county project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to respond to some of those comments and statements?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. We did receive from Mr. Hartley yesterday, that outline of expenses that he'd like more detail about. I didn't have an accountant yesterday, so she's looking at it today. And I already know that the, what was the last line, Phil? That you called the?
Undocumented expenses.
Undocumented expenses is actually 23, 24 expenses, and we have that, those details for you. So we can, we're happy to, and we've stated this all along, we're happy to, you know, continue to drill down on the details of accounting for the expenses from the past, and we're open to do that, we're willing to do that, and we're looking for direction on how we want to move forward beyond the spot that we're at. Additionally, I appreciate Mr. Hartley's comments about an indirect cost rate and, and how that idea might be utilized for this project. Typically, indirect cost rates cover the cost of staff who are kind of incidental to a project. So if we were writing a grant to cover this project, we would both include indirect cost rate to cover the time of our accountant and other people who come in contact with the project, but we would still certainly fund a staff member for this project, because it's necessary to, to actually complete this work. And I think that our last, lack of success administering this project in the past is demonstrating of that. It's the reason that we haven't been able to be successful.
And just a comment, that remembering, the data I've given you this morning, just for, just for mine, also applies to other four. This has been four years in the coming. It's taken four years to catch up, you know, to this point, because we didn't have reports in, you know, in the first, in the first few years. And indirect cost rate, that's really, really up to the institution, how it uses it. Institution, indirect cost rates run anywhere from 2% or 3% to 10%, up to Stanford University, who charges 100% indirect cost rate for any funds it receives from outside. So there's, there's no limit on what you can do with indirect cost rate. It just makes it clear to everybody that, look, we're going to set aside some percentage that we all agree on is appropriate for the community development, you know, group to have, to use as they see fit to cover what they need to. Remembering that all the, everything that's been done so far, all of the lots that have been cleared, including my one, it finally got cleared after four years, have been done without funds going, you know, for administrative costs. And I don't think we should be held to sort of pay back time that was spent the last four years, but we're happy to talk about, or at least have the opportunity to discuss with the department, an alternative approach.
At this moment, Mr. Hartley, I'm going to ask you to please take a seat. If we have a direct question to you, I'll ask you to come back up. Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
I want to appreciate, I appreciate, and I want to thank staff for working on this for years. This has been a really difficult project that we all inherited. And the HOAs, Kathy, did you have a presentation to make, too? Okay, then I'll just hold on, off of my comments. Okay.
I want to hold one second. Vice Chair Crandall, I saw you had your pen up. Cao Parker.
Thank you, Chair. Can I respectfully request five minutes?
Yes. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 11:26, and we'll start off with Kathy. It got quiet real quick. All right. We're going to reconvene. Thank you for your patience on this. I just wanted to kind of check in with Supervisor Pyska and with Director Turner. At this moment, how would you like At this moment, how would you like to move forward? I know we have Kathy that wanted to speak. I'd love to give her that time and then come back to us and figure out, okay. So let's go ahead and open it up.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. My name is Kathy Andre. I serve as President of the Riviera Heights Homeowners Association, as well as the Conocdy Fire Safe Council. So we've been at this Benefit Zone program a very long time. We believe that the Benefit Zone program, which was developed in 2019, was proposed with every good intent. At the time, the HOAs were faced with how to abate high-fire risk properties whose owners were deceased, in extreme tax default, or whose properties were abandoned. These properties posed an extremely high-fire danger to all of the HOAs and the surrounding areas. Many of these hadn't been abated of fuel loads and dead and dying trees and everything else in 15 years, 10 years, 20 years. So this was a very, very serious, serious situation at the time that the Benefit Zone was unfolding. It was imperative for the safety of all that these properties be abated of wildfire risk. As such, the Benefit Zone program was created, and a majority of the homeowners in those HOAs and surrounding areas voted to approve the Benefit Zone program. This was all done in good faith and out of great need. In hindsight, as we all know, the Benefit Zone ballot was not written clearly enough to define specific program parameters, and there was no infrastructure set up at the time to manage and implement the program. Basically, it just got plopped in code enforcement's lap. And that was the reality of it. So over the past five years, the county and the four HOAs involved have faced serious challenges and stumbling blocks in trying to make this very flawed program work. I'd like to acknowledge the leadership of both Supervisor Pyska and Mariaa Turner in trying to resolve these challenges. I'd like to thank Marcus Beltramo with Code Enforcement Division for his perseverance in implementing and trying to implement this program. And my thanks to Deputy Administrator Shannon Walker-Smith for all of her efforts in putting together the long-awaited financial accounting of expenses charged to date to each of the Benefit Zone associations. Thanks also to County Council and everyone else involved in trying to find a path forward. I believe at this time, with everyone's help, there is a path forward developing here, and I think that's where we really need to look. With that said, Riviera Heights requests that the Board of Supervisors postpone today's We just haven't had a chance to look at the numbers. We haven't had a chance to look at all of the expenses and how the money was spent out of each of the HOA funds. So for Riviera Heights, we don't have yet a breakdown of all of the costs and expenses that have been spent to date on abating specific properties. Again, we finally have these numbers, and so I just want a chance to see them and review them and analyze them before the board makes a major decision that's going to impact the balance of the funding in the Benefit Zone accounts. So the, I think the question that we have is, does the operation of the Benefit Zone warrant a full-time person? We all agree, Riviera Heights wholeheartedly agrees that administrative money should be, Benefit Zone money should be spent on administrative costs. To what degree is the question? And so we are very supportive of a part-time position at this time and would certainly approve of funds being expensed for a part-time person. If you look at the numbers you've been averaging clearing about 20 properties, 25 properties a year over the past four years or so, I don't think that number of properties being cleared each year warrants a full-time position at the cost of about $88,000, which represents, you know, if you look over the salary cost of this full-time position, it's half of the money remaining in the Benefit Zone funds that would be, that would go towards an administrative full-time person instead of being spent on clearing additional properties that need to be cleared. Again, we just would like the opportunity to review these expenses and these numbers. Maybe we'll come back and go, oh, my gosh, this full-time position is absolutely warranted. We just, we're shooting in the dark right now. We don't have the numbers to make a major suggestion other than conservatively say, again, we wholeheartedly support a part-time position. We are just concerned that the position of a full-time person is not warranted and the funds should not be expensed for this. You know, we've waited three, four years for these monies. I think we could just wait a little bit longer until the HOAs are given a chance to review the expenses, I'm sorry, the expense breakdown. We've been waiting a long time for this expense breakdown. We sure would like the opportunity to review those numbers. And I think the council and supervisors might like to review those numbers also in making this important decision as to the administrative costs related to this program. In the meantime, I know all of the HOAs will continue working with everyone involved in the Benefit Zone program. We all want to have a good resolution to this, and I applaud everyone involved for stepping up and recognizing the need to go, oh, gosh, what happens when the Benefit Zone money is spent? What do we do next? How are these properties going to be abated in the future? So I am very pleased to realize and understand that the people involved in this Benefit Zone program are thinking in those directions and are heading in those directions. It's, that's, to me, the most important question that we can ask. There's two questions on the table for me. One, part-time or full-time administrative person. Two, what is our future and how are we going to be able to abate these programs in the future once the Benefit Zone funds for this particular pilot program run out? Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, so again, I'll start my thank yous all over again. Thank you to staff. This has been a long haul. Marcus and I have been having meetings with the HOAs since, I mean, even before I was sitting up here on the dais, I started going to those meetings. And the HOAs have been diligent and assertive participants. We've been working together through this for a long, long time, and it has been a frustrating process. But everyone showing up always showed up with patience and a willingness to keep looking for the way forward. So I just, you know, I thank Kathy and Phil for being here and for the others that couldn't make it today. And I also want to, like, pull on one thread that you both brought up. In the beginning, when this was voted on, it was voted on for a reason, and my predecessor, Supervisor Brown, brought this with really good faith because there is a very, very high wildfire risk in all of the Riviera's. And since then, there has been just this incredible amount of work that's happened in, on every level, with the formation of the Fire Safe Council and all of the grants and projects that we've been really collaboratively working on together. So I really feel like this was the beginning of where we are today, which nothing looks the same there anymore. We've done a lot. I really want to thank you both for being here today and for being here the whole, every step of the way. It's been a long, long path. So the concept of double dipping, and this is like my super, super simplified way of explaining this, Phil, is that everybody prepaid for this service. Every single person that paid that $100 prepaid for the service. So when one person's lot gets abated, they've already prepaid. They only prepaid $100, but that's what they prepaid for that service. So we can't go back and charge them again. And yeah, I mean, if there was enough money, everybody could get their lots serviced, but we don't have that much money. And there was never going to be that much money. So, you know, it is where, it is, we are here today trying to figure out how to move forward. It sounds like we need to postpone this conversation anyway, so I think we'll be bringing it back. There is, you know, we've talked about the staff hours that go into this, and we've talked about the abatement costs. But there's a lot of hours that go undocumented because there's a lot of self-abatements. There's a lot of work, Marcus is nodding, he does a lot that never shows up on the spreadsheet. And I think that's the difficulty of figuring out if this is a part-time person or a full-time person. But whatever happens, whatever this board decides, how many hours that person's going to be working, it's going to be very well documented. They will not be able to work on any other project. And I do suggest that we have a review period to see if we're giving them too many hours or not, or not enough. I know there's limited abatement funds, but we know that people do self-abatements. We also know there's other grants, grant opportunities out there. I mean, for, there's been, there's so many. The Fire Safe Council grant right now is running out, but that is $2,500 a home for people to get that service done. That, you know, if this employee connected a homeowner who was low on resources but needed to get the work done, connected them to get a grant, it wouldn't impact the fund balance for abatements. There's been a lot of money, it's been a lot of work done through NCO, helping seniors there. I used my discretionary money to buy several thousand dollars worth of weed eaters and chainsaws so that seniors can have their yards worked on. So I would think that this person would need to be in close contact with the Fire Safe Council to know when these grant opportunities are coming up and have a list of them. So then when they go out to a property and say, you know, we have an abatement, we have an issue here, we're going to have to abate, do you have the resources? No, well, maybe here are some grant opportunities that could help you. So I think that there's a lot that can go into this, but again, those hours can be really hard to document and quantify. So we have to start somewhere, whether we start part-time or full-time, we have to start somewhere and then come back and review it and see if we're falling short or leaving too many hours on the table. So that's my recommended, recommendation when we look at this again, because we do need to look at this again. And the HOAs have been very patient waiting for these financials, so a little bit longer to let them review how much has been spent in every Benefit Zone is appropriate. I know we would like to start in January. Hopefully, we can make that work. I don't know. I know there's, the admin needs to assist and review also. So this is a great, great place to start this conversation. I'm glad we all came here today with the willingness to move forward because this has been really difficult, and your input is invaluable. So I think that is all of my comments, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from other board members? Supervisor Green?
I appreciate it. Sounds like we're going to move toward a, we're going to push this down the road a little bit. My question is, you know, how much time the HOAs might need to review that because, as presented here today, we're hoping to get some direction so you can prepare to come back for mid-year budget. I would hate to have that reviewed, which is necessary, complicate any efforts to bring forward a proposal for mid-year budget, whether it's half-time, full-time. I think as currently presented, you've documented need for full-time. I understand that raises concerns, given there's no cost recovery mechanism in, I agree, very flawed program, but well-intentioned. So I think there's, I think you've documented the need and the wisdom of staffing up on a full-time basis. It's hard to do half-time positions, recruit and fill them. As far as inability to document time, I see Ms. Dillman Parsons in the back. Social Services is all about time study buddy, and many of other agencies do very aggressive time study things. So if we don't have those tools, maybe we need those tools so we can break this stuff down, not just on time spent, but break it down by the Benefit Zone, that time's being spent on, break it down on whatever budget unit you're coming out of. So it sounds like everyone's kind of in agreement. We need to refine this process. I just don't want that refinement to complicate our ability to bring back a budget proposal timely.
Director Turner?
Thank you. The HOAs have waited very patiently as we went through hundreds of pages of documentation for the program to do our own internal sort of review to understand where we were. We do respect their request for additional time, and we will work with admin to make sure that we do not push any deadlines that are necessary for their work on the budget.
Any other comments? I do want to echo a comment that was made by Supervisor Pyska, and we just saw this not too long ago in one of our code enforcement assessment, where there was an abatement that was done, where in the storyline of the process, it said in 2022 and in 2023, but yet all the charges that we saw that were listed on what was going to be placed on the lien were all from 2024. And so I think that Open Gov is going to solve some of these problems. Our prior history in using Exella or using whatever other manners of keeping track of data has not been the best for us, but I know that I see hours always missing from just the assessment hearings we get. So I think that we need to be cognizant of that as we look at the total amounts and costs. I have no problem with the continuance to get a better understanding of what is possible, what's not possible, what changes to the program. But what I would like to ask, because I think that's going to be an important part, no matter what, I think from the very beginning, this was planned as a pilot to go, how do we do this for the whole county? And I think it's important for the pilot to show some level of success of a revolving fund of sorts. I don't see that written in here. It's only about how to expend the rest of the funds based on the zone of benefit. But I want to kind of see the plan on how it is that we're going to make this countywide so that it's not just general fund that's being used. How are we going to try our best to create a revolving fund for the purpose specifically of this? So a little bit bigger picture, but at the same time, the pilot program is where we can learn how to make that happen. And if we can make it happen there, we can probably scale it up to what needs to happen for the rest of the county. So that would be my ask, is a little bit more detail outside of the protocols of the zone of benefit, because there's still going to be some code enforcement activity as well as zone of benefit activity kind of simultaneously within. But how are we going to do that? And that would be my only ask that I would add on to what's already there. If there's nothing further, let's go ahead and open it up for a public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Come on up, raise your hand and zoom. I see no activity, so I'll bring it back, and we have no action for today. Bring it back when you're ready to bring it back to us on your own terms and time, and we'll continue the discussion.
Thank you.